I'd like to call to order the January 30th, uncle Carlisle region.
And I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
We need to roll call. Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Morano, present.
Mustafi, present.
Rainey, present.
Wilson, present. So we'll start with hi, Darcy. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. It's good to see you. I know that you wanted us to prepare sustainability reports for this week. And Harry unfortunately couldn't be here because he has work. But we did prepare some things and we'd be happy to discuss it if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I can begin. So first, we kind of looked at some of the different clubs that are working on sustainability. So the first one and probably the most prominent one right now at CC is Green Team, which is run by a few seniors who are the presidents of the club. And they're working on making CCHS a more sustainable place. And one of their big missions they're working on right now is composting in the cafeteria. So they're working on doing a lot of composting. And so far, I've spoken to a few of the club members and they're saying that's going pretty well, but it is a quite new initiative. They also worked on making a pollinator garden recently. So that's kind of hoping to attract bees and other things so that we have a prettier school area. And then there's another club that's working on sustainability called the Sunrise Club. And that's a part of the bigger Sunrise movement. And that's also, this is a new club this year, so that's exciting. And they're kind of, they're a political action organization that advocates for political action on climate change. So they're, right now, they're doing a lot more advocacy work. And then I believe fundraising as well is another thing that they're doing. And I've spoken to a few of their club members. And I've been to a few, I've been to one of their meetings. And they're doing a great job on trying to get that more in the open and more of a bigger club at CCHS in their first year. And then there's another club called the Environmental Club. And right now, some of their bigger things are releasing landings turtles into the wild, kind of doing different nature walks and hikes and looking at the local wildlife and then doing more sustainability projects. And then kind of Harry and I talked about the general attitudes towards sustainability at the high school. So while there's some particularly motivated students, such as the club members and leaders of these three majorly focused sustainability clubs at the high school, we do notice that the general student population does seem to have not necessarily the best care sometimes for sustainability. This year in particular, there has been a lot of complaints by staff for littering and trashing the campus, as well as just kind of mindful attitudes in the cafeteria and other places about cleaning up trash and everything, especially since this is such a new building. There is like the hope to make it as clean as possible. But there have been other kind of things trying to change this around a little bit, such as student government, which is similar to Senate, which we're a part of. And they did a campus cleanup recently. And that had a lot of members involved and there was community service. And it was all across the school, so that had great participation. And then I know trash trucks also came on here a few weeks back. And they're doing a great job at trying to clean up the skate park. And they kind of told you about their mission. But they're also, I think, inspiring sort of a different like notice of sustainability at the high school. So being mindful about trash pickup. And I think that more students are kind of becoming involved in that effort as well as kind of different sustainability efforts. So those are the major things that we kind of talked about with sustainability. And if there's anything else that you would like us to like look into or cover, we'd be more than happy to do so. And then on the Senate side, sorry, this is a bit of a longer update today. But we just finished our spirit week. So that included Patter Puff, which is a flag football game that's a tradition at the high school. We had a dodgeball tournament with I believe over 300 students came to. So that's quite a significant number. That's about one in four students at the high school. And that was, that went really well. And there are different spirit activities throughout the week. And overall, it's been a, it was a very successful spirit week leading up to Thanksgiving break. Yeah, thank you.
I want to thank you for, and Harry, for keeping sustainability on your radar and helping us keep it on our radar. And I would hope you and Harry, when you choose, bring us up to date again when you think there's information that's good or bad or indifferent, ideas about resources you need. I hope you'll not only bring it Mr. Mistrillo's way, but our way as well.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely love to do that. And we sort of have been talking at the Senate level as well about different sustainability efforts. And if there's ever a club or anything that you'd be interested in coming on and talking about, such as trash trucks, we'd be more than happy to kind of facilitate that.
Great. Thank you for your report. Very thorough.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you, Darcy.
We'll see Harry next week, the next time. Yeah, well, next week.
Yeah.
Thanks. So we've public comment now. If you are in the public and you would like to share thoughts or questions with us, now is the time to raise your hand using the participants tab. I am not seeing any raised hands. Okay, so go to recognitions. Naomi, hi, welcome.
Hello. Sorry, have to get those earphones in. Um, could I ask Kenlin and Savan and Kristen to turn their cameras on as well? Is that okay?
Yes.
Great. Hi, guys. Um, so we are here to talk a little bit about the work of Mecko Family Friends. And I will sort of start us off and share a little bit about why I am really glad that you guys have chosen to recognize their work tonight and then see if any, if they have anything that they want to add. But so Mecko Family Friends is not a new organization. It's a partnership between families and staff members. And its goal is to really make connections between our Boston families and our Concord families. Like so many things in the last couple of years, it has sort of been hibernating during the pandemic. And so this year, finally, it's sort of been reinvigorated. And what I think has been really nice, or at least what I have really appreciated about the work this year, is that in addition to just being really glad that it's back and planning activities and events and ways to connect and build relationships and partnerships between our Concord families and our Boston families, that this year, there seems to be a really concerted effort and a focus to really bring some of those events and to bring that partnership into Boston. So in the past, I think Mecko Family Friends did a great job of connecting families. And I'm sorry, I have, I am in my kitchen because if I am not with the cats, they're going to knock the menorah over and burn my house down. But it is causing some technical, technical problems here. So I'm sorry, my camera keeps moving. So, but this year, there's been a really, really concerted effort on not only developing that partnership and connection, but really bringing it into Boston. And so the first event that we had, I think it was really fitting that the first event we had in 20 months of the Mecko Family Friends program actually took place at Franklin Park. And that one of the next events, which is I think going to be a big one, is an event taking place at the Frog Pond in Boston. And that, that's really sort of a difference and a departure from activities in the past, which have included, you know, apple picking and other things in the Concord area. But it's, I think it's just, it's, it's just recognition that this partnership goes both ways and that it's an attempt to really make that bridge go in both directions. And so I think that that's one of the reasons that we are recognizing the work right now. And I, in particular, I just want to say that the event in the fall, which was really widely attended, would not have been possible without Kenlin, Kristen and Savan's tireless effort in making it possible. So thank you to the three of you. I don't know if either any of you would like to add anything about the work that you guys are doing. But I know, I mean, I can speak for Alcott, but I know that Alcott greatly appreciates it. So thank you very much.
Sure, briefly add, hello, everyone. I'm Savan. I'm the new Mecko liaison, Alcott. And I mean, I think Naomi did a great job of covering that. But yeah, just to really emphasize, I think, the point in connecting the Concord families to Boston as well. I think that was something that was really important and we got great feedback on that event. And so we're looking forward to doing the Frog Pond event that we're trying to plan for February. But I have to give a big thanks to Kristen and Kenlin and also to Nika, who isn't here, but she was part of the team as well, who were really just like pushing it and saying like, we're going to do it and we got it done. So thank you so much to all of you as well.
Yeah, I would add something, but Kenlin, do you have time to unmute?
I do have time to unmute. Hi, everyone. Welcome. I think Ms. Cracker nailed it on the money that this program pretty much, I don't want to say always existed, but it's been there for quite some time now. And the only difference is that we're bringing Concord to Boston versus Boston always going to Concord. And that is the highlight of everything, seeing Concord families in Boston, in my city, taking the drive that my son does every day. So it was, it was amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I would add, I'm Kristen. I'm one of the parents at, at Alcott also. And I've been kind of learning about the Mecko Family Friends program for the last five years as my son's gone through the program. But this is the first year that we've had much more investment from Boston families. Not, not investment, but Kenlin was able to step up. And she does not have a lot of extra time to put this event together. And, but having the perspective and the leadership of a Boston family, I think was much more informative than a Concord family saying, hey, I think Boston families might like that. And so hopefully, kind of this is the beginning of Boston families kind of feeling a larger part of our community and being invited purposefully to say, you know, what is it that would make you feel more part of our community? And then we also kind of have, I think, bigger, bigger plans for developing more meaningful and long lasting relationships that hopefully last over the time that all the kids are together. And I think a big part of that is supporting the Mecko staff. You know, we've got this new director, Heidi, which has been very supportive of kind of our ideas. But Savan, this is your first year at Alcott and you just jumped right in. And I think you have some really important ideas that I hope that, you know, at Alcott, but also at the, at the district level are heard in terms of how both Mecko staff, but also all of the school staff can better support our students from Boston. So, you know, look forward to kind of hearing more ideas that we have about attending Black Nativity in, in Boston and kind of talking about it or, you know, going to events in, in Boston or taking the bus through neighborhoods to kind of see where kids live and things like that. So we're going to try to do kind of more meaningful things to bring more acknowledgement or understanding into the lives of, you know, Concord families, but also allow Concord families to kind of show that we value, you know, our families from Boston who spend the days, every day coming out there, that, you know, we can put our sports on hold to make those relationships and go to Boston on a weekend. And so it was really great to kind of see in both ways, you know, families making that extra effort and showing what's important. So hopefully, you know, the school board and the district keeps investing in kind of meaningful activities. And, you know, as, as Mecko staff and other folks kind of suggest some ideas. So thank you. And also to our Alcott PTG, who, you know, certainly put their money where their mouth is to kind of support it and make it feel like a well-funded event, not just an afterthought. So thanks to everybody who was involved.
Thank you, Savan, Kristen, Kenlin. Thank you. Thank you so much. I mean, I know that everybody's feeling very pulled, very stressed for time. Energy is hard to harness. And so this is really commendable, what you guys have managed to do already this year. And very much looking forward to, to everything that you have going forward.
Yep. Keep us informed.
Yep, please. And yep, I mean, this is, you know, we're always here. There's a place to publicize events or, or talk about events or highlight events or, or just pop in and say hi, like this was a success or this, you know, this is something we need to work on. We're, we're always, always listening.
This is very encouraging, especially as we try so hard to come out of this period of social isolation. You seem to be remedying a great deal of that in a very significant way.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Naomi, too, for coming, for bringing everyone together tonight. Okay, we have reading of the minutes from open session of October 26th and November 9th. A motion to accept the minutes. We'll move.
A second for both?
Discussion?
Nope. Thank you very much for the minutes.
Okay, roll call. Anderson, I agree both.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, Y for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Wilson for region.
Okay, correspondence. On the region side, we had a communication for our student reps. And.
I think that's it. Is there one other one?
Time on learning.
On learning.
Thank you.
We got back to her yesterday with the worksheet. Thanks to Mr. Mistrillo.
And Concord School Committee had a number of communications on the middle school and a communication on the mask policy. Okay. And a communication, I'm sorry, on facilities. On facilities.
Okay. Chairs and liaisons reports. We see.
Okay, so DEI, we had a meeting last month, or this month, I should say. I don't know. It's the end of November, so it's hard to say. We have another meeting tomorrow. We are meeting on Zoom. We encourage anyone in the public to come and meet with us. We have taken a collaborative approach to building our agendas and hopefully everybody feels part of that. And I think that all of you got an email from me today with some homework from Andrew that I've sent along for tomorrow if you're attending. And if you're not, that's totally fine. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
In her email, it said there will be questions. It seemed like they were going to be attached.
They were within the body of the email, I think. There were three questions.
Were?
I think you had to pick out a quote, something like that. All right. Looking at it. I think it's within the email. You might have just expanded the email.
Right, I'll look again.
You have to look through, you have to read down into Andrews.
To Andrews.
Just into the forwarded message.
Yeah.
I'm guilty also.
Okay.
The read allowed.
I am not an expert in Gmail, but. Read aloud, level two, yes. So, yeah.
Any sentence?
Yes.
From the article or like?
From the article.
Okay.
From the article.
One that resonates with you.
A sentence that resonates with you from the article.
Great, perfect.
So you can go home tonight and do your homework.
Okay.
We had a great discussion, I thought, the last meeting and lots of questions. And Paulo was with us. Andrew was with us. Andrew gave us an update as to his work. The equity surveys are, have been completed. And then the only question out there is if we're going to do a separate equity survey as a school committee, because some of us have done it as parents. And I think Andrew was going to send the survey along, but he was just going to get some guidance from Dr. Warham and Dr. Blake on that. And then we will be having some focus groups. And we'll have to split up to three and three so we don't violate open meeting law. Those are coming in December. And as I said, tomorrow with the articles, some discussion. And on the agenda is also school committee training that will probably happen maybe in January. We're still trying to figure out the direction we're moving in on that.
Okay, good.
That's it.
That was good.
And we, since the space is limited in the other focus groups, we, since we have our own focus group, we should into our, into the school.
We should go to ours, but if, if it applies to you and you're a parent and you want to attend one of those, you can attend one of those. Like if, if the groups speak to you in that way, you can do that also. All right. And I think I also forwarded all of his Zoom, not all the Zoom links, but the dates for all of those.
Thank you. Alexa.
Sure. A few weeks ago, I think on Monday, the 15th, the CPAC Board had their monthly meeting. And we were really fortunate to have Deb Dixon give a comparable presentation to the one that she gave us, like the meeting prior, our prior school committee meeting, I think. And it was actually a really well-attended board meeting. And I think that Deb's presentation was very well received. There was great Q and A. And again, I think that it is very clear, the investment that the district is making in special education. I think parents are becoming, I don't know, more abreast of what's going on. I think, you know, we forget how bizarre 2020 and some of 2021 school year was. I think that it was just harder to communicate about anything other than COVID. So to then have this presentation where people could really see quite how much the needle has moved in these specific areas. Because everyone knows about their own child's needle and how much that is moving. But it's really, it was really, really spectacular to see that from a district level for this group. And I think they've got some new leadership that even was voted into the meeting or into their team at the last meeting. So we're, we're really looking forward to just refining that collaboration. And I think the work is, is moving. Emma, you have anything to add?
Yes, hi. I have, just on the region side from that meeting, there was a call out to families in Carlisle to join and participate and, and bigger engagement that, at those meetings, they are looking, Concord, Carlisle Regional, CPAC Group is looking for connection with our Carlisle families and the Carlisle CPAC. So we are pushing that message to our families in Carlisle.
It's a very young board. And not, I don't know the ages of these ladies, but their children and whatnot seem to be predominantly elementary. So that makes a lot of sense, Emma. There's, they know that they need some voices there.
And it's essentially a brand new board also.
Yes, really.
A lot of families, elementary and middle school, not many families on the, from the high school. So they're really looking for engagement. So we'll keep that message going to Carlisle as well. A lot of energy, which was really refreshing to see.
Good.
You wanted to.
Should we do the building and the conference?
Yeah, good point.
We do this every time.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, don't I? So we last met here on the 9th. Since then, on the 15th, we joined the Select Board, as did many other committees. Not all could attend and gave brief updates pertinent to the envisioned Concord document and initiative. And the Policy Subcommittee met on the 19th. And we devoted the entire meeting to facilities and fees. And there's more work to be done with meetings with admin tomorrow and meetings with the Policy Subcommittee maybe next week, the 8th. Next week, the 8th. Dr. Hunter and I met with Sue Curtin today. She represents the NINAI Committee.
Yeah.
And we have a request from our NINAI Connections for information about the Concord and Carlisle schools so that they can inform their own children about life here in, in our schools. We're starting to work on that.
I'd just add to that, that Sue's been meeting regularly with Mike Mistrillo. He's on the, so we're keeping that relationship alive through COVID.
Excellent. Thank you. It's good news.
That's it. Great. That's a lot. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So on to discussion, COVID updates.
Great. So I put together some of our most recent data as we usually take a look. I did this, this morning, and we've had one case since then. So I put the time on it because I didn't have time to change everything. Just a reminder, the mask mandate is in place. We are adhering to the Commissioner's order for masks through January 15th. So that'll be an ongoing discussion, I expect, as we go through December and January. COVID cases, it's worth noting, some of our patterns changing significantly here, which is not a Concord anomaly by any stretch. But we have definitely seen a substantial uptick the last three weeks, I would say, starting that week of the 14th, where you'll see we had a lot of cases happening. I'm going to just call Thoreau out specifically because we have had a spike at Thoreau that thankfully looks like it's waned off over the last five days or so. So we're grateful for that. Over the course of 10, nine days, we had 13 cases. A couple more followed that while we were on the break. They were spread across eight classrooms with as many as three cases in two classrooms. So we just kept watching all of that very carefully, stayed in continuous contact with our local health officials as well as DPH and DESI. I think it's important to say out loud, the message we're hearing from the state-level organizations is three in a classroom is sort of their threshold for more concern. If you go over three, that's when they're going to start talking about what we're going to do. With a lot of reservation about sending anybody home remote. So, and at most, it would be a week with the seven-day quarantine, which you might already be partway into. So the interesting part of test and stay is every time you get a new positive, you reset the seven days. So it's an interesting dynamic that we're just getting accustomed to. But DESI was very supportive of what we've been doing, as was DPH. Essentially, the message was stay the course and stay in touch. We felt very well supported and grateful that it's waning. So I think good news there. A lot of, some of those cases were, were off of the pool testing that we found. And then some of them were off of test and stay. And then a mix of everything else with symptomatic and close contacts from home and et cetera. So there isn't any one thing that happened there. That's really good news in many ways. Do we think there might have been some school transmission? Which we're going to just carefully say, we don't know for sure. But we did have multiple cases in a room that were coming up on our testing. So it was a good learning experience for us. We maintained educational service through all of it. That's the goal this year is to be able to weather it and manage it at the same time. So overall, we're up to 63 cases. I think that's almost double what I brought to three weeks ago. So it's worth stating how significant it's changed. And then testing participation, this is the week, the full week before Thanksgiving. It's very consistent, week to week. We are glad to get that back in place this week. We didn't test last week with the short week and the state's directive. Test and stay, this is just sort of, this is what the numbers start to look like with us doing the antigens in school. It's a lot to manage. I won't say that it isn't. We've had a lot of help. CIC sends people onsite. We're benefiting from that. We also have a couple floater nurses who move around depending where we need them. But it's a lot of logistics. And by the time you're testing eight classrooms in a given morning, that's a pretty, pretty substantial process for sure. DESI's didn't publish much on paper, but we did meet with the Commissioner right before Thanksgiving. They named to expect spikes, just like we were experiencing at the time it happened, and said their gradual process will be to look at within a classroom. And then if potentially a grade level seems to be having some sort of spike, they would look at that. Never mentioned closing schools entirely. In fact, I feel like we were getting a pretty hard directive to not necessarily do what some of others have done ahead of us and an absolute directive to be on the phone with them as you're making decisions. So I personally lean into that because I'm finding I get a lot of support when I make that phone call. So I would hope that will, that will be, continue to be our way of managing. Just while. Just while we're on remote and the weather's turned into the wintry stuff here, there's no word on remote options for snow days, just like there hasn't been for heat or any other things that have happened as of the last six months or so, really since we fully reopened school in April statewide. So it is traditional snow days as of the moment, and that'll be the way we operate unless the state gives us other options, which I'll come back to you with and we'll talk through. So, so that's it, traditional snow days are back, everybody. And then just our, the really successful pediatric vaccination clinics that happened at Alcott in November. The second round of that is starting tomorrow at the high school. And then the 13th is the follow-up, and we think we've got that all in place. And it's really grateful for the real ease that this vendor has and the way they operate. It's just pretty fluid, so.
People have been, like, over the moon about, even just little things, like how exceptional each individual nurse is there and just how they have treated the kids. I mean, I've countless.
That's excellent.
More than, you know.
That is excellent.
People coming in and getting offered their boosters. Has been a sort of, I don't know if I should advertise that, but it's been like, parents being like, oh my God, and I got my booster. So it has been, the vendors just been, like, they're just so easy.
They have been a pleasure to work with, and we've had little bits of need at times if the appointments fill up and I'm, you know, on the, on the horn saying, please, open it up more. And they, they do, and really a well-oiled machine and great with the community. I'll be sure to pass that along, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, it is like, it's, it's, it's wild. It'd be nice to hear.
Do you have numbers as to how many kids were vaccinated at those clinics?
We totaled 740 the first night and just over 600 the second night, so over 1,300 kids.
And will we get an update, as we did for the middle school and the high school, you know, with percentage vaccinated?
Definitely, so the nurses are geared up to start collecting the vaccinations once the kids are fully vaccinated, so that'll happen in the next few weeks of December and into January. So we'll bring you those numbers as they.
They go to the state system.
They should, they'll also go to the state system. And usually, the numbers I bring you are a combination of what parents report to us, and they double-check in the state system, and between the two, we get a real thorough, thorough look.
And I guess one thing that's ever-changing with test and stay that we didn't really think about when we were coming up with our policies was now that we're gonna have a lot of vaccinated kids, so they will no longer participate in test and stay.
So when I tell you how many, how much logistically this is to manage, the relief I was offering last week was once these kids are fully vaccinated, you don't have to test and stay them. Because we're, you saw the numbers, we've done none at the high school and maybe three at the middle school because one case might, might give you a couple of people to test and stay. So it does, it will change dramatically, given the expected high percentage of.
Well, and it's so interesting, like, when I look at your presentation, to me, really, it's a story about vaccination.
It is.
There are no outbreaks, you know, we are not seeing really anything worthwhile to note at the high school and Sanborn.
Totally agreed. We don't just, we what, test 10 to 15% of the students at the high school? At the high school, you tested 80 kids before the break, which is not even.
But kids are not going home sick and neither are adults, you know, there's, doesn't seem to be.
No, I agree with you, and with all the variant talk and all the things that keep evolving around us, I think we're living data that shows the vaccinations are working.
And I think, actually Massachusetts came out with today that of vaccinated, the breakthrough percentage seems to be settling at like 1.67%.
That is what Tricia McKeon keeps saying to me, and at first it felt higher, but now it's.
Yeah, so the official Massachusetts state data has come out on that, so.
That's a lot of good news, yeah, that's a lot of good news. We hope that eventually the, of the 17-year-olds can get boosted.
Yes.
It will, it'll come. I think they're trying to figure out the dosages.
Yes.
Good, so. Kind of predicted, we thought this was probably what was gonna happen, I think that's okay, and helped us to, as it happened, go, oh, this is what we thought could happen.
And I just wanted to ask, we're still doing the, we're still asking parents to fill out the screener in case the kids have symptoms, correct?
Yeah, just for symptoms.
Yes, for symptoms.
Just for symptoms, yes.
And I do think even at the high school level, I think kids are testing because there's a, there are a lot of colds going around, there's a lot of flu going around, you pretty much, you have to test. And even at the college level, there are flu outbreaks right now, and so kids have other things besides COVID.
That's correct.
And so they're, they might not be in pool testing, but they're testing outside of school.
That is a good point.
Good, that's great. Like, my entire bathroom is overrun by.
By next tests.
I just buy them, you can't get them, so I just scoop them up everywhere. Maybe that's bad, they've been boarding them, I don't know.
Just so I'm clear, we aren't accepting the at-home tests yet?
No, I just mean for me, before I go see a girlfriend, I'm like, you get invited to a, like, lunch, and you're like, eh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's where we're all gonna be eventually.
Hundred percent.
We did it as a family for Thanksgiving, I mean, it's like, before you see parents, like, everybody buy next, and let's just move on.
Yeah. So thank you.
Great. Great. Challenge, success.
Sure. So then Mike or both on, so we'll invite them to turn their cameras on. They've both given you highlights on a small slide deck. You've had access to the full data report. So I think I'll invite you to turn it over to them, and then we can just have a conversation.
Great. Welcome, Justin, welcome, Mike.
Hi, good evening. All right, so who's first, Mr. Cameron here, you start?
Doesn't matter to me.
All right, go get them.
Go get them. Okay, are we gonna share, screen share the slides?
Yes, Aaron, can you pull them up? Hold on, I'll do it. This is the trick of Zoom. I'm used to her being able to take cues from me when she's in the room.
Yeah, Lori, for some reason, I can't screen share.
Oh, okay, I can, no problem.
Okay.
Just had to get to it. All right, Mr. Cameron, you're on.
All right, thank you. So we've had a chance to come together as a challenge success team. In total, I wanna say, and I felt like one of these slides, maybe the second slide, Lori shares the team members, yep, there they are. So we are about 15 or so. We have a collection of students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, including one eighth grader who is a representative of student council. Then we have five parents, and we have about seven staff. That number of staff actually has dropped a couple, so I think we're about five or so. In terms of the parents and the staff, there's probably about three or four of us who have been with Challenge Success since the genesis of Challenge Success at the middle school, which was, I believe, 2017, 2018. The school year 2016, 2017, the district engaged in Challenge Success in an effort to survey the students in spring of 2017. The first formal year of Challenge Success at the middle school was my first year, and again, that was school year 2017 and 18. If you scroll back up, I just wanted to mention again, the team members. But these two slides represent the two things that we wanted to report to the school committee, the first of which was a survey that challenged success thanks to the kindness and support of the Concord Ed Fund. Here are some statistics and a data presentation that was done at the either September or October Challenge Success meeting. We do have a Challenge Success coach and consultant, his name is Paul, and he was able to do about a 40-minute presentation with us. And here are some of the highlights that were a part of the minutes of this Challenge Success meeting. So three words that the students in spring of 2021, and I would just preface the fact that we were in a pandemic, and the students took this coming off of a hybrid, or in a hybrid school year. So kids were really in a classroom, desks were in rows. It was very teacher-centered instruction. There wasn't really much project-based learning happening, much group work happening. So we really feel it's an opportunity for a new baseline for the middle school, and we're really excited as a Challenge Success team to survey our students in a year or two to really measure the growth. But here are some of the statistics that were presented to the Challenge Success team at our Challenge Success meeting about a month or two months ago. So three words that our students of last year used to describe our school: fun, caring, welcoming, and a word that trends throughout the research of Challenge Success and how students will describe at school, and that word unfortunately is boring. Students are getting an average of about 7.7 hours of sleep, which is pretty much where they were just a few years ago when Challenge Success surveyed the middle school students again in spring of 2017. So this is an area where our partnership with families really haven't seen a lot of growth. And there's so much research behind the importance of sleep and how that can lead to a more successful student in all facets. So here's a statistic that has increased dramatically since our implementation of our advisory program called Home Base. Because when students were surveyed in the spring of 2017, we did not have advisory in place. And one of the many reasons why we were using research-based decisions to put forward an advisory program was to make sure that our students felt connected to our adults and to align with the research that states that if students feel like they have even just one adult at their school, they're gonna feel safer in going to that school. So 72% of the middle school students felt like they had an, an adult that they can go to. And that was dramatically up since 2017 and trends much higher than regional, regional and national averages. The workload and students feeling overburdened and stressed about homework also were some marked improvements. In 2017, 59% of our students felt like they had too much homework, and only about 30% said they had the right amount. In this past spring, and understand something, a lot of the students this past spring were doing their classwork because of the hybrid model at home. So we fully expected to not really see much growth on this data point, but we saw a tremendous amount of growth. 32% of the students said that they felt they had too much homework, and 65% felt they had just about the right amount. Here's another, here's a data point that we have, we have essentially made our charge, and I'm gonna talk about that in an action plan on the next slide in just a couple minutes. We still are pretty much at the place we were in spring of 2017. In a statistic regarding engagement, 42% of our students this past spring felt like they were just doing school, and they weren't authentically engaged. They weren't highly curious, they weren't highly motivated. Even if they were doing well, they weren't defining themselves as engaged. Again, I have to restate, this was a survey done in a pandemic and during a hybrid model. Only 18% of our students this past spring felt like they were fully engaged. And we really had an opportunity to synthesize this data, unpack it, and I'm gonna share with you an action plan in just a couple more, a couple minutes. To reduce stress, students said they felt like there was still some work to do with reducing the homework load, creating time for homework in classes, creating time for projects in classes. I think parents' voices really echoed that. And the students were very clear on the work that we've done as a district of including more diverse voices and hiring diversity, but they felt like we could do more in that area as well. So transitioning over to the second slide and the action plan of the Challenge Success team of our students, parents, and teachers. We did this past, our very last meeting, we talked about all the things that we have accomplished as a school and a district regarding Challenge Success. Some of those highlights include homework-free weekends, that parallel, that work being done up at the high school. Student Shadow Day that I want to talk about in just a couple minutes. Open session with faculty, which has really been a big part of our advisory program as well. Parent coffees, unplugged nights, parents really getting the message out to Challenge Success. And the mission is really about engagement in talking about a well-balanced child and defining, and how our community defines what success is. We have gone forward in some policy changes. One of the example of policy changes that went forward to school council and school committee a few years ago was in the team model of a teaming middle school, making sure that the teachers came together to have academic discussions about not overtaxing and overstressing our students. An example of a policy that was drafted and accepted was no more than two major assessments, major projects or tests or quizzes on any given night. And again, Home Base was a big part of the first data that was dropped upon us in spring of 2017. Finally, we can't at all, you know, not acknowledge the work that has been done in our master schedule. We went from, well, actually, let me start in this place. The Student Shadow Day was an opportunity three years ago where 14 Concord Middle School faculty and staff spent a day with a student volunteer. We spent our whole day, some of us actually started at the bus stop and ended at the bus stop. But I would say about nine or 10 started at the first bell and ended at the last bell. That informed a lot of transformational decisions in our master schedule. At that time, when we did the Student Shadow Day, we did not have transition time between our classes. And many of us, I was one of the adults who shadowed a student, I shadowed a sixth grader. We felt that when the bell rang, because there was no transition time, we were caught up in, you know, almost like a rat race, like, you know, the greatest race and trying to get to the next class. And it just contributed to this frenzied, very stressful pace. We went from no transition time to having five minutes of transition, transition time last year during the pandemic, to now having four minutes of transition time. We went from having no snack and recess in the morning to having snack and recess now in the morning. We went from advisory being about six minutes to last year being 15, to bringing it to 10 minutes this year. All of these things were actually validated with a survey that the middle school did upon the students of last year, when we asked them, what would you like to pack up from the master schedule that we had in place during the pandemic and take with you as the pandemic, we thought, this past spring was lifting? And we heard students, when they said that they wanted a longer transition time, they wanted to preserve that recess and snack break in the morning, they wanted a longer home base and advisory block, and they wanted us to preserve as much as of the recess time after lunch, and we've done that as well. Moving forward, I'll just close with the, where we are as a Challenge Success team is we've actually brought together a working group from this team. There's about six of us, a couple parents, a couple faculty and staff, and one student who is looking to move forward with doing the Student Shadow Day again to allow us, as a faculty and staff, about four years later, to just go ahead with what was such an important, valuable experience. To just go ahead with what was such an important valuable experience. That shadow day about three years ago landed in a place where we did a forum. Where we invited all our parents to attend. And we're looking to do something very similar this year that might be in a hybrid way. And essentially each faculty and staff who shadowed a student sat next to the student that they shadowed. And we just shared out our experiences and shared out, you know, about. How enlightening it was for the staff. To really have a better understanding of the students day at the middle school. Questions? Was I on mute the whole time?
We're pondering engagement and some of, some of the other items, I think this is very helpful.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I totally forgot to mention the engagement piece. Thank you, Court. So the engagement piece, really, we all looked at each other and. We really talked about whether or not it was the challenge success team that should be tackling engagement. And what we decided to do in September is actually take that charge. And bring it to the teaching and learning team, the team that consists of all my department chairs. And essentially, we meet as a teaching and learning team every month. And for the past four or five years since I've been in district. That agenda is pretty much driven by all of these, you know, agenda items that, you know. The department chairs might have and might want to discuss questions that they have. We've decided to treat every department chair meeting, every teaching and learning meeting as a professional learning community. Solely focused on the topic of engagement. And that is a charge that the teaching and learning team and all the department chairs at Concord Middle School has taken on. We're doing nothing but meeting for ninety minutes a month on the topic of engagement. And I think this group knows this, but all of the department chairs at Concord Middle School are instructional coaches. And what they're taking from this professional learning community is they're going back and doing observations. With the teachers in their department and they're having coaching discussions with members of their department. So the engagement piece has been brought over to the department chairs at the Concord Middle School.
So just my observation that I think you pointed out some areas of real success, which was, which are home base. Putting in snack and recess and putting in passing time, those all seem like. Not such a big deal, but I know it is, it can make a huge difference in a student's life. Just having those little bits of space in their schedule where they can sort of reset, take a break. Do what they want to do for a little bit of time and I just think that makes a big difference in their day. Because as you observe, just running from class to class with no breaks. Especially if you're a sixth grader, that's a dramatic change in your life. And probably not the right time to make that dramatic change, so. I think that, you know, we have to take this with a grain of salt, as you said, because this is, survey was done during COVID. But I think you're seeing a lot of the positive strides that you've made with putting those changes into place. And it sounds like you're fully committed to keeping them as part of the schedule, so I think that's great, thank you.
Welcome. And, you know, in parallel to the challenge success survey, again, was a survey that I put together. That was just a little bit more focused on practices at Concord Middle School such as. You know, we had a ten minute mask break recess snack during the pandemic year. Is that something that if we're able to hold on to in future years? And the students were overwhelmingly in support of that, of the longer advisory home base. And in the transition time as well.
Great.
And I guess from my perspective, I mean, I would guess that if you were to do the survey now, kids would be much more engaged than they were in the spring. You know, I think that some of us have lived with very unengaged middle schoolers and high schoolers for the past eighteen months. You know, but I think what's important is seventy two percent of the students felt like they had an adult that they could go in the building, which I think is probably the most important part of the survey. Especially in the middle school population. And that, you know, something that kind of frustrates me is some of this, you know, the school has no control over sleep patterns. The school has no control over how many activities or sports kids are playing and why they might be having too much homework. So that piece is not really in here, is they might think they have too much homework, but do they think they have too much homework because they're playing five sports in a season? So, you know, I always kind of take it with a little grain of salt, but I do think that the takeaway is having. You know, kids engaged with adults is probably the most important thing during these years.
Can I ask? Yeah, one of the questions I had, Justin, I noticed that it seemed like a metric that moved quite a bit was. The kids perception of their workload, you know, being either too much or just enough. And it seemed like there were more kids in twenty twenty one that thought the homework was just about right. It seemed like that kind of flipped, was that the result of something you guys conscientiously did at the middle school with respect to homework? And if that was the case, I'm just curious, like, is that individual teacher driven? Is it grade driven? Is it team driven? Is it like subject driven? And like, do those little different groups reach consensus on workload? Or does it sort of just happen organically or did it not happen at all and kids just changed their minds?
Yep, great question, so it used to be department driven, but we're making that shift to make sure it is grade and team driven. And that the sixth graders, you know, each, each grade has three teams. And each sixth grade team should be in parallel to what is actually the more important conversation. And that's not so much reducing homework, it's making sure that it's, the homework that's being assigned is not busy work and it's authentic. And it's truly engaging and it's not leaving behind the important. Piece of research that says, you know, students need feedback, so how do we harness technology? In giving homework that offers up feedback pretty much immediately to the students. Because that piece is sometimes lost with homework as well. So I, I think it's a conscious effort. To really take the conversation from the department level to the team level. And then understand the empowerment that happens. Because if a sixth grade social studies teacher is having a discussion about homework in the sixth, in the social studies department. Where eighth grade social studies teachers, let's pretend are dominating the conversation. Then they may feel a bit muted. So now that conversation is picked up and it's brought over to the team level. And all sixth grade teachers, for the most part, are like minded in, in, in a context of not overwhelming the students. So I think that shift, and it's very much how we're building the new middle school. That shift is a very conscious shift that has moved the needle on this.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? All right, Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right, I guess, I guess that means I'm off, all right, well, thank you, appreciate the, the time, talked a little bit about challenge success and about the school. You know, just a little context too, so this was, the, the survey was taken in June of two thousand of last year. And I, I do think it's fair to say that, you know, it wasn't a pandemic, so we do have to take it with a grain of salt. I don't think that means we dismiss everything, but I do think it makes it just more complicated how we translate and analyze it. Because even for the, from the student perspective, what was their mindset as they were taking it? Were they, were they thinking of, of it like during as the, as the hybrid model? They were all back in school at this point, was it from that perspective? You know, so I, I do think we have to be, you know, be careful about how much we interpret the data here and, and what we do with it. But nevertheless, it is useful and there's some, there's some really good nuggets in there for us to, to, to move forward. So just starting with the, with the first one here, well, back up one more, so it was one thousand seventy one. One thousand seventy one students took the survey as well, so it was a really good sample. So if you look at this data and what we learned from our coach is the fact that fun is even in the equation is really unique to Concord. Which I found to be, you know, just really heartening, heartwarming. In John Clement, who was the gentleman who presented the data, just said, you don't typically see that. Not surprised that we saw as stressful as also not only an increase, but also just very prevalent. You know, really happy to see caring and, you know, competitive, there was a decline in competitiveness, which, which I think is, is a positive. A few others that, you know, didn't make this, this slide, but that were very prevalent or friendly, supportive, inclusive, academic. And other, and there was also a boring one as well, which is pretty typical as, as, as Justin pointed out. So if we go to the, the second slide. And just so, a little context about the survey in general, it's broken down into a bunch of different areas. And so it's health and stress, it's sleep, it's academic integrity, supported school engagement, extracurriculars. Parental expectations, homework, et cetera, there's a few others, so just highlighting. Some of the bigger points from some of the subgroups here and under health and stress. So seventy three percent of the students reported always feeling pressure to do well in school. Sixty four percent reporting that they often worry about taking assessments. Sixty nine percent reported grades and assessments cause stress. And so you can see that academics are stressful and I think some of that is, is normal and healthy. But obviously, we don't want it overwhelming students either. Forty six percent did report stress from lack of sleep. Our students are not getting sufficient amount of sleep, it's no surprise. I also have teenagers and I witnessed it myself. They're getting, our average is under seven hours, they're supposed to get nine. And you know what, I think we've seen progress in this area with the late start. And so it's, it's a good thing, but the kids are going to bed eleven or later. I think that is just part of their natural rhythm and they're, and they are busy. I would love to see them get more sleep, including my own, my own children, but, you know, it kind of is a product of the situation. I will say that a lot of kids, if you, if you drill down on some of the data, you see that the kids do have their phone in their, in the bedroom. I don't pass judgment, I'm just saying, I, I do think that was, that is probably causing some of the students to stay up later than they would like. And any event, moving on to some of the other health and stress indicators here, fifty nine percent reported stress from the workload. Sixty five percent reported that they often are always worried about not doing well in school. Thirty eight percent reported stress from mental health issues and eighty two percent reported that college and future plans caused stress. That is, there was an increase. And there is, really isn't a surprise there, I think the pandemic definitely exacerbated that issue. There was a lot of students that were accepted the previous year that decided to do a gap year and then enroll the following year. I think there's a little bit of a backlog, so I think it was natural just for that to be really stressful. And lastly, college again weighing heavily on students with sixty three percent often are always worried about getting into the college of your choice. Next slide. So percentage of students who missed school last month due to health or emotional problems, we see a drastic decline here. And I will say it's, it's very comforting to see that, however, this is definitely one, I feel like we do have to take with a grain of salt. I don't know exactly the perspective of students when they were taking this, were they thinking about the hybrid model? Or were they thinking about the fact that they were all in school in June? And, you know, truthfully, I think they were happy to be in school full time. And with one caveat, I will say that I think the half day Wednesdays were a huge hit and success and a nice breather for kids. The fact that those were going. I, I, I know the kids really wanted to hang on to that and I know it's, it's more complicated than just saying, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna proceed. But this is definitely one, I, again, I like to see the decline, but I do think we take this with a grain of salt. Next slide. So supported school, I do like to see the fact that seventy six percent of the students feel like they have an adult, they can go to school. It's nice to see that there's an increase and I think the fact that you can see a drastic increase in ninth graders. Is the product of the ninth grade academy and I think that's a testament just really to the, to the staff. And not only the structure of that great academy, but also staff, you know, there's one quote that. That has stuck with me from a guidance counselor who made the comment that, you know, that they, they knew more kids by October. Than, than really they did the whole previous year in terms of ninth grader, so. You know, it's been a really challenging year and a half and ninth grade academy has been a, a success. And it's really a testament to really the leaders who have made that work. Next slide. So homework continues to be a, a topic of conversation, a constant struggle. And really, really complex issue. Because again, if you drill down on the data before we talk just about the times, you know, you can also see that kids report, and I think they're being honest, and again, I see with my own children. That they're, they're not necessarily completely engaged with homework. And they are distracted and they are doing things in addition to their homework and whether that's email, text. You know, TikTok, listening to music, which isn't necessarily a distraction. And I don't pass judgment in that, in that respect at all, you know, I was a teenager too, pre cellphone, but, you know, I get it, right? There's other things that are a little more appealing than doing the homework assignment. You know, with that being said, I do think it might skew some of this data. Nevertheless, I think it's something we need to continue to work on is just reducing homework in general. You know, if kids have a very busy day that start, starts very early, six thirty in the morning. Most likely getting up and it's a very long dynamic and difficult day with kids running from class to class. I do want to talk about that in a second in terms of passing time. And they are, we have more than ninety, I think it's ninety seven percent of our kids involved in extracurricular. At least one, which is amazing, which I think is a positive, it is, it's, it's. You know, if you, it's certainly more than just academics that the kids are coming to school for. And we want to make sure that they can enjoy their high school experience and extracurricular is a part of that and we don't want homework to be. You, you know, to, to be a barrier and it's something I talk about with kids often, even the other day, meeting with a student and family, but an issue unrelated, talking about the academics and. And, you know, trying to, you know, to just get the young lady to relax a little bit, she's very driven, excellent student, great kid. And I said, you know, if you're staying up till midnight every night doing homework. You know, you really have to assess whether or not the quality of life and, and everybody laughed at the fact that midnight would have been an early evening, so. You know, sometimes we have to save kids from themselves. And even if you look at some of the data about what kids wanted, it was like open enrollment in APs, for example. Which I understand from a student perspective, why they would want that, but that's only going to lead to more homework, so it's, you know, it's a, it's a struggle here. But anyways, so the average longest amount of time doing homework on a night is three point one hours too much. You know, we don't want to see any more than two and a half hours, I personally think that is still too much. Nevertheless, we have an agreement that it's going to be twenty five to thirty minutes on average per class per night. If you do the math, it works out to about two and a half hours. You know, I do think it's important that we have these homework free weekends as well. Because homework, it, it, it can't be busy work and sometimes you start to question the value of it when there's too much of it. And so you can see, I don't have to read all these, but you can see that it's, it's clearly an issue for students. Sixty six percent reported feeling often always stressed due to homework. And, you know, the, the, the school in general is a welcoming, caring environment, it's very rigorous, it's very academically focused, all good things with the exception of. You know, you have to be really performing at your optimal to do well. And I know that even as adults, how often do you walk into, to work every day feeling at your one hundred percent? So I think it's important to be, to be mindful of that, we do have one week in the month of no homework. And occasionally I like to slip in another one. Just to provide some additional support for students. Last slide. So some of the suggestions from students for changes, fifty three percent add mental health resources. I'm certainly not going to suggest the students are wrong in this area, I will say it's probably a failure of mine. We are well resourced and I think we have to make sure students know all the resources that are available to them and we have actually made some efforts. all the resources that are available to them, and we have actually made some efforts there in terms of, you know, for lack of a better term, just marketing and let, letting students know what their, not only mental health resources, but academic resources. Um, sixty four percent creating more time for students to work on homework and projects in school. I think it's a uh, it's a great, a great suggestion. Uh, you know, sixty two percent having teachers coordinate due dates for projects and assessments. Ninth grade academy does this really well. We do this really well as a school over right before the end of a quarter or before a break. We actually have schedules for what days there'll be assessments on. It gets a little more complicated to do it on a weekly basis. Um, and we also encourage students, if they have more than two, to uh, more than two in a day, to be proactive and, and communicate with the teacher about um, you know, asking for a, a reprieve or maybe doing it the following day, but that's not always easy for a student, recognize that. Sixty percent asking for, you know, more no homework on weekends. Had a student recently reach out and say, could we do that? Also some no homework during weekdays. Uh, so we kind of started that di- dialogue as well. And just overall, the reduction of home, the homework load, seventy three percent would, we're asking for that. I do think uh everyone is well intentioned. And uh, but I do think it's an area we could probably do a little, little more on, but it it's a little easier for me to say that, sitting in the principal seat as opposed to trying to going back to, harkening back to my days as a teacher and trying to get through the curriculum. So just a few other things uh point out that I thought were pretty interesting. Um, in, in the data just is, I, I thought it was really great to see that um ninety percent of the students for port, they feel like they are at least sometimes often are always meeting parental needs. And I think that um parents have a greater appreciation of the stresses that are on kids and are really, um, you know, partners in this effort to reduce stress. Um. Uh, I, and in terms of the passing time, I did want to make one point to that where last year the restrictions, the reduction of the nine ninety allowed us to do a ten minute mass break. We had nine minute passing times. We had half day Wednesdays. You, you, those were really great changes. I'm not suggesting that we would uh fully implement all those. You know, but when you're doing six classes in a lunch day with only four minutes between passing time, uh, you, it's, it's, it's a lot. I mean, you're, you're finishing one class. Four minutes is not a long time to walk that building. You're immediately hopping into another class. And, and truthfully, it is a product of the schedule and just the state requirement of nine ninety. Um, but you know, there's uh, it's not often in life that you're running even from meeting to meeting with only a couple minutes in between. So some of this is um just a, a product of, of things that we have to deal with, but uh, the half day Wednesdays and longer passing times were definitely helpful and kind of reducing the stress. We do have a very long lunch, probably too long, but we're not going to tackle that one. But uh, that's a lot from uh, from that data, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Anyone have questions?
Um, I don't have questions, more just comments. Like again, you know, the fact that you have kids that are able to reach out to adults, I think is huge. And I do think that, you know, the pandemic did help that. And I think kids actually had to reach out to adults. You know, they had to zoom with the guidance counselor, zoom with, you know, a tutor, zoom with whoever, and that was a personal connection even through the computer. So I, you know, it's hard to look at this data because it was done in the spring. I think kids feel much better right now. If you were to give them the survey right now, it would look very different than this. And you know, I mean, I, I've been at the high school with kids for almost ten years and it does feel less stressful. It definitely does, but I think that's a positive, but there's still, you've got, you know, the peer peer-to-peer academic pressure that they put on themselves. You've got parents who are involved, like everybody's got a hand in it. So I mean, I don't know how to solve any of that, but it's an awareness of that.
And it's not. Yeah, the, those are, those are really good points, Tracy, because if you look at um, to some of your points, if you look at the data, you, you will see it does bear that out in terms of just the peer-to-peer pressure, pressure they put in themselves. Um, you know, you have like twenty five percent of the kids saying they're checking their grades daily. So y- y- yeah, it's really hard to tackle that, and I think that is a very long process. I, I will say that we're, we're, you know, sometimes um some of the more hard charging kids, when you're talking about this will, uh, suggest that you're trying to remove all stress from the situation and um, and that's not the case. Some stress is healthy. And uh, you know, wanting to perform well is healthy. It, it's all about, you know, finding balance and having the right perspective, and it's very easy as an adult to say that. But I think just the, the more we can talk about, you know, the kids are to do their very best. They're going to be successful. They're going to land where they belong. Uh, and we, uh, we don't have to put so much focus on the college process, the top twenty schools and, and, you know, in the competition. Uh, but it is, it's easier for an adult to say that, for sure.
And is there any data that they pull on, you know, upper level classes like honors and AP classes, if those kids are reporting more stress than kids that are?
It, it does break it down by AP. Uh, it does not do it by the honors level. And you will see that um there is a little more stress at the AP level for sure. That one's a tricky one because it is a college level course. I will say that I think it's college level course in a high school uh consumable product and not necessarily a college course. Um, our AP scores are off the charts, and that's a great thing. I would, I would be okay with uh, with, you know, with more force uh, and maybe um less homework. Uh, but that's not an indictment on a teacher either. I, 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 I can respect that the job that they need to do and, and um, they have their own self-imposed pressure. Um, but you know, oftentimes somebody will, I'll make a suggestion, someone will say, well, you have to realize the score is going to be lower, and I, my response is, that's okay. I mean, our scores are really phenomenal. Um, and so, yeah, but yes, it does break it down in a way.
Mike, you talked about that, that the kids don't seem to realize the supports that there are for them around, especially mental health supports. So how do, how do you deal, like, how do you address that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um. You know, oftentimes I think kids are, are afraid to ask for help, and I think the first place they should start is a guidance counselor, and there's clearly a spot where you know, our guidance council role would end and a clinician's role would begin. But I think even reaching out first to the guidance counselor is a great way to start that discussion. Uh, also dovetailing just on the, on the data about students' willingness or, or having a, an adult they can, they can go to. Um, you know, I think that's a good way to start that conversation. Uh, you know, too often I will say that it's at the acute level when, when, when we're, we're dealing with it. Um, and I don't know if, if kids, uh, I have to do a better job of marketing. I'll start with that. And I think we have to um reduce the stigma around reaching out for help. And uh, it's sometimes it's just a conversation and, and that's okay. But even, even with kids that do ask for help, you have to be strategic where those meetings happen based on the student's comfort level. Because they don't want the stigma that they're, you know, they're seeking support. Um, I do think some of that is stigma is washing away as uh, you know, the, the, just the therapy is, is more accepted. Uh, um, at this juncture, we have some great professionals that really care about kids and and oftentimes it's uh, when you're trying to sell it, for lack of a better term, to a student, you know, it's just a conversation with uh a trusted adult where you can really say almost anything um, that maybe you're not comfortable saying to anybody else in your life.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question, but um.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's perhaps me doing a better job of making sure kids know what their resources are.
Well, you, you take a lot on yourself. Uh, I, I think there's plenty of people, school committee included, who share these responsibilities, but I, I'm struck with three things. Uh. One, that both of you bring a, a great deal of uh very genuine uh sensitivity to these issues. And even though the, this was June data, you're not discounting it. You're, you're framing it as June data, but you're not discounting it. It's real data. Uh. Uh, secondly, uh, I'm, I'm distressed, I'm not surprised, but distressed to, to see that sixty five percent reported that often or not, uh, uh, often or always they worry about not doing well in school. And I think this reminds us that we're teaching kids what well means. And I'm not sure we've got the right set of metrics in front of them.
Yeah.
Thirdly, what is not mentioned here is teachers are in the same environment. Hmm. And I think we, we need to care for them as well.
Yep. Hmm, I agree. I mean, uh, you know, the kid, we often talk about kids learn from failure and the importance of failure in life. You know, the characteristics and the, you know, just the, how you can grow from that. But truthfully, it's the environment, particularly the college process, makes kids feel in a way that failure is actually not an option.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's, I think, I, it's really hard to be a teenager right now.
Hmm.
And I will say that, you know, these kids are, are just super impressive. And you know, I do think that they're going to be fine in the end, but I, I would say that I think it's harder to be a teenager now than it ever has been, and some might say uh, you know, you can hearken back to, to a different time and it was, it was harder in a different way, and, and I don't disagree um, with some of those. Uh, but overall, I think if you look at the, the entire picture, to be a teenager now is not easy. And I think these kids are, you know, they're resilient, they're, they're better educated, they're smarter, driven, they're more creative. Uh, you know, they give you, they certainly give you hope about the future when you look at the kids in, in the high school, for sure.
Hmm.
Hi. Can I go?
Yeah.
Hi, Ms. Astral. It's
Right.
It's, it's really good to hear that, um, you know, there's so much sensitivity around um, uh, the emotional well-being of our students. Uh, and I, I know that um, the, does that data is early uh in the school year. I wonder if uh, you seeing an increase in, um, in uh students um being in crises or uh, needing to really talk to as the years has been progressing through. Uh, that will be one, one of my questions. The other question is, uh, were you able to capture any data around um executive functioning of the students, like organization uh, uh for the students when it comes to their email boxes, um, the amount of emails that they are getting? Uh, the reason why I ask about that is that uh when our students transition to high school, uh, out of high school to universities, there is that need for preparedness uh for the new way of communication, and it was definitely stressed during, you know, there was, uh, there was definitely much more need for that type of communication with teachers during pandemic and, and at the high school, but that becomes uh, the primary source of advocating for yourself, communicating with your professor. Um, are we equipping, equipped, um, uh, making sure that our students are equipped and they are practicing those, those um uh, skills um at home right now? Uh, do they, do we have any data of how they're managing their mailboxes? Are they late learning those skills? Do they feel organized? Because that's a big part of, you know, not being stressed that I forgot something, uh, knowing what, what, you know, what assignments are happening or um is a big part of a stress, uh, uh, reducing stress in a class.
Yeah, it's a good question. So there, there really isn't any data captured, captured that, but your point is well taken. In terms of um preparing kids and within it from an executive functioning standpoint, the ninth grade academy, there is a focus on that about straight organization, about making sure that we're speaking the same language across disciplines, that we're teaching kids how to take notes properly in each discipline. So there definitely is a focus in ninth grade. And I think if you're a special ed student, particularly if your goal is around executive function, you're getting a lot of support in that area in grades ten, eleven, twelve. And I think for, for kids that are, that are not, that are performing either average or well or even better, uh, you know, they're not getting that support and they probably do need it. Um, it is about wh- where you find the time to do that, to actually implement that. In terms of the organization and self-advocacy, just overall, you know, I do think that is a collaborative effort with, with families too. Um, and you know, teaching that your, uh, just children how to, you know, how to advocate for themselves. Um, and, and some organization strategies are helpful. I will say the kids do not, not all. A lot of kids don't read email, and it's a problem. Um, you know, I, I think I've told the story before and it'll be quick, but we, you know, we had a, I have an advisory and we had a nice laugh because, you know, you know, I have a, I, I have a an email address where all the kids are on it. We have a shared calendar, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I have one student who I, who I adore, but you know, is, he's, I didn't get, I didn't, I didn't get this information. What are you talking about? What do you want me to do? And so we had him pull his email up and then search my name, and it was just a sea of unread emails, and so we got a good chuckle about it, but I think um encouraging kids to read email would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, to that point, um, I looked at my daughter's email, uh, um, mail, email box. And uh, it's cluttered with like reminders and all, all of that stuff. So um, I wonder if we are, you know, desynthesizing kids uh to email besides the point.
I think all humans, um, yes.
Yeah, and it's, you know, i- in a professional life, you'll, you'll find, you know, it's, it's an ongoing uh problem. Um, so so unfortunately, uh, it's, it's, there is probably not an, um. It's, it's not an easy solution. Uh, and then I had another question about, um, how does the information flow happens from feedback from students? Is there a way that, you, you know, uh, then if students feel, i- is there a process where um you, uh, the administration can assess, you know, survey is great, but as you're going through the year, is there a process where uh, administration can assess sort of like where uh the needs are of the students, where are the most, you know, where are the areas of most complaints? Like, are you able to adjust and you know, address those questions? Like, how would that flow of information happen to heads of the departments, to administration, to teachers? Uh, just to understand what the students are going through.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I mean, I, I do think we, we kind of capture it anecdotally in, in, in different areas. Um, you know, additional surveys might, are not a bad idea. I do think we have to be careful not to survey too much. The kids sometimes complain that they're, you know, survey exhaustion. You know, and then we have, we, we're meeting with kid, different um kid, different groups, I guess some anecdotal um uh, data, but in, information. But you know, I think we probably could have a, a more systemized approach to it as well. Um, and you know, when, when we talk about stress in general, if you, and if you looked at a bar graph, there's, you know, there's certain pressure points where it just, it's, the kids are more anxious than whether it's seniors around November first deadline or you know, the student body in general around the end of a quarter. You know, how it factors in with athletics and shows. So you know, there are different points in the year that tends to be a little more stressful. But to answer your question, I think um, you know, I think we do do a decent job of capturing it in different ways. Uh, but, but certainly could do a better job capturing some of these more important questions with the entire student body.
And a quick follow-up, is the information from, so the students go to guidance council, is that information flowing anywhere or like how does that work?
What information and, oh, it, it just, you're talking in general, like, and how did it come to? Yeah. Okay. So I guess it depends on the, on the issue. So we do have um a student intervention team that meets every Tuesday. You know, that's usually trying to, al- almost like a case study of students that are struggling in many areas. Um, if it is a, if it's a student, special ed student, it's an academic um issue, it might go to the case manager, it might go to the teachers. You know, if it's a, if, if it's an issue related to you know, we're students struggling socially, it might flow to us. Um, so you know, I do think we, we, we don't necessarily have a flow chart about, you know, what issue would go to who and when. But I do think it's just really important that we keep open lines of communication a- as a school, and, and, and so we certainly work closely with our department chairs. Part of the leadership team with, with Allison the Wiki is, is the one for, is the leader of the, of the guides chair. So um, you know, I think people do know where to go in terms of staff. They do know where to go depending on what the issue is.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Just one last thank you to CEF because
Yes, absolutely.
Covered a substantial price tag for the survey, and we're just really grateful, and it came with this really big commitment to the kids' well-being, especially during the pandemic.
Yes.
Um, so, so that we could get this benchmark data and see where our kids were in the spring as we got to that place in time. So just very grateful for that.
And is it appropriate for them to receive some of this data?
So I let them know you were getting this tonight. So I don't know if any of them are on the call, but they know that we were sharing out tonight, so they're aware and certainly interested. I expect they'll watch the recording.
Right.
Great, sure.
Great. Sure. Thank you, Concord Ed Fund.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, thank you for pointing out, Laura. I can't say enough about Concord Ed Fund and the, I mean, the efforts are just really amazing. So thank you very much. Bye, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right.
Little bit of a shift.
Little shift. Capital plan worksheet.
Yes. So, um, I was asked to just put together, um, this spreadsheet and take off all of the estimated costs, um, for discussion.
I'll add to that with the intent to have you dialogue about where you might want to place the proposed projects or not place the proposed projects. Those are the choices you have. Um, we had Jared's team had drafted out ideas earlier this fall. So there is a version attached to one of the previous agendas where we sketched out some ways you could approach it. But we, I think the chairs wanted you to have an open slate. Talk, talk.
Thank you for giving us that opportunity. I'm curious, the, uh, the amenities, two car, two rows here and the lighting and paving have been in front of us for some time now. The tractor and or trailer, very new, the turf field has been something that ebbs and flows. Uh, so I wonder if we might start with, with these questions, uh, around turf field. Is there a shelf life? Uh, and very different question around, uh, the lighting and paving. Is anybody qualified to tell us at what point that reaches a level, a, a safety threshold that demands more attention than it has for the last five years? A tough question, I know, but I, you know, who could we turn to to give us an objective opinion about how, how we're, uh, uh, on borrowed time? What kind of borrowed time?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we've had Gail Engineering look at the road and DPW did an in-depth engineering study of the road. Everyone agrees it needs. There's no question it needs to be addressed. In terms of the urgency, um, we do our best to maintain, keep up with the potholes and the wear and tear so that it stays as safe as possible. I think that's where you're at is, are we to that point? We're managing that? I think we could a little bit longer. But at some point we have to actually do it because we all know if you patch and patch and patch and patch, the the decay just gets worse. So, so the moment in time is the question, Court. That's exactly right as to where we are. We thought it was pretty important a couple of years ago when we brought it to town meeting. And, um, are still having the same discussion. The lighting, we've band-aided a bit along the way, added a couple of poles here and there, tried to take some of the spots that seemed the biggest safety concerns and address those. Could it be better? Yeah, it, it could if we did the whole roadway and.
This, there is a, there is a preferred lighting plan that is in existence somewhere. I just.
Yeah, it's part of the.
It's part of this estimate.
Been done. Yep.
And so the work has been done. Um, the, the design work has been done. Do you have to redo any of that?
I think so.
No, I don't think so. There's no, nothing substantial that's changed there. We'd want someone to endorse that, but
Right.
I don't believe there's huge changes to come.
And this has been, I mean, this has been topic of discussion for many, many years. I, I mean, for me personally, I think this is a huge priority to finish that building. And, you know, I, I look at it as we're entering into another building project. I, I think the elephant in the room is kind of, it, it was never finished. The roadway wasn't finished, the lighting was finished. We had to go back to the town and you know, maybe we have to go back to the town again, but I do think it should be a priority for this community to really dig into.
And this would include the sidewalks, correct? Okay. Those are not really in very good shape. I mean, you could argue they're not really accessible.
They're not really accessible. Right. I mean, I think an accessibility.
Wheelchair. Definitely tough going.
It's just so heavily used.
Yeah.
Like this is not some area to the side.
No.
You know, I mean,
The end, history and exit and primary path.
Or it's not peaty. It's not, you know, right. It's not ripply. It's, everyone's using it all year long.
Two-town community campus.
And it is.
With a rec center.
Yes.
Best, like, it's so great to see everyone there. Yeah.
So one suggestion, I know that the town has a very aggressive paving project for 2023. So maybe we could get a sort of an economy of, um,
Maybe.
Maybe what?
So the, the town has a very, so they're, uh, back, they're way behind in their paving. So they're doing like twice the amount of work this year, 2023.
Yes.
Sorry, not this year. Um, and that's, that's about all I know about it. Uh, so I'm just wondering if we could get an economy of scale of, a big paving company comes in twice or three times next year to do work. This is all, I know it's like, sometimes the town will do stuff in the fall and that's probably not a good time to do paving work at the high school. I'm just saying, I'm not an expert. So it's definitely probably a summer project.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I just don't know if we could.
You can find out. We talk with them regularly.
I feel comfortable. Yeah. And I can talk to Alan. The only thing I am concerned with is the timing because of town meeting, passing it. They book up all their summer work. Late winter, really early spring. And I don't know if the ti- when is town, actually no. So that. Yeah. That's the only concern.
We'll always be in that, you know, that's.
But even if it was a summer out.
Yeah.
Would at least have it.
Allocate the money. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Specifically the funding could be. Yeah. Cause I know it's not a, it's not a fall or winter project for sure. Um, so we'll just have to, cause we're always going to be in that town unless they move town meeting to February, which I don't think is happening.
Then to that end, would you want it on, if it's going to be something that passes in April, May, but wouldn't happen till the following June or July, you'd want to probably prioritize it. Even once it gets approved, it's still not happening for a while.
Right.
Likely.
Right.
Unless we get lucky.
And I, I would talk to an expert and find out, um, you know, what, how much it would go up, uh, each year, the increase, the percentage. I guess if we're a year out, I threw in 10 to 20%. That was a number that I heard, which is probably high. I think 10% could be an accurate number.
We've had sticker shock on this number for day one. So.
Yeah. Did they say how many days it would take? Like, is there any estimate as to how long it would take?
I don't know.
We've been on the receiving end of a brand new street. Yeah. And in my nick of the woods, right? This year and, and there were multiple streets that were done. It was literally a two-day project.
Usually quick.
And it was so fast. And, you know, when it was still usable, like not ideal, like not, you know, one lane or whatever. But, you know, you just wonder if it could, you know, if, if if maybe it lined up with the calendar somehow. And if it was a professional day, I don't know, all the stars would have to align.
We can do just about anything.
Yeah. If you could get an, an idea as to duration. They could say, whoa, we have to take it down to this, a 10-day thing. I don't know. It's, I'm not.
No idea.
So we'll get some follow-up.
And it's just, it's just the walkway, not the walkway, the driveway. It's not the parking lot.
Right.
It's just the driveway and not the upper driveway.
In front of BD.
Just the BD section.
Row. Whole length.
Horseshoe there, yeah. But not the upper.
Not the upper.
Okay.
That was all done in the building. Well, we think you could close it down to the ones, and then you could.
A little half and half or something. I don't know. You just never know.
All right.
Okay.
You'd be all remote. I'm just kidding. I know. No, no, no. Um, so Stropole, it sounds like, is there anybody who objects to putting the paving and lighting in the number one, in the 23 position?
How to do it?
I love that.
Okay. Just a reminder for process, you would need a warrant article on both towns. And then, uh, you want us to try to what, 24, 25, 26, 27?
I think we have to, right?
Right.
Your plan, so.
It might make it easier to, so the turf field, when was expected?
I guess.
Placement.
Said for three to five years, which would put us at, um, uh, 26.
Okay. We'll slap that one in at 26.
And can I just ask, does any of that, uh, money come from the athletic revolving accounts or no?
It could.
Okay.
It could.
I mean, it can decide that.
Okay.
And you have, what did they put aside? 200,000? Didn't we talk about some money?
Oh, stabilization. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Stabilization account.
Stabilization. Thank you.
So you have started with that intent that it could go to that. And then, so the campus tractor trailer?
Yeah. So that is something that we feel could pay for itself over, you know, four or five years. It's a wish, but it's certainly something that would fit into a capital. It would be primarily, it would be a hundred percent used at the high school. Uh, we do have an outside contractor that comes in and helps with, um, uh, with the snow removal, et cetera. Uh, that would reduce those costs significantly. And this has been on since I've, since I've been here, even with the prior, um, maintenance manager, this has been a wish.
Okay. When we discussed this before, did we talk about trying to get some kind of analysis of, of savings and, and all that? I thought.
I can, I can provide that.
We did that. Let me catch that conversation. Okay.
I can bring that for next week.
Help me understand, big enough for plowing, but small enough for mowing and seeding?
With the number of cash.
Is that a tricky equation for putting a vehicle on the road and then on the fields?
I don't think so. I think.
I don't know.
Yeah. I know what it, I have a visual in my head of what it looks like. Um, and it can be used, um, all seasons. So yeah, it would save, it would save on, um, not only contract services, but time. That's the other thing. Time is money. It would save, it would save, save on time as well.
For plowing, for example, if we had one vehicle doing the play, I mean, right now, when we have a contracted service, they have.
Yeah. So the, so we do a lot of our, we do a lot of our own plowing. Uh, one of the issues though is when the snow piles up.
You need the big ones.
Yeah. Piling it up. And we hire, uh, a contractor for that.
Need the big vehicles, strong. So what about if we slot the building design for the amenities building and the tractor trailer in FY24? And then put the amenities building in FY25. And then we don't have enough stuff to, FY27 is open for now. Right?
Could you put the, um, the building design in 23 also? I, I feel like that's just another one of those places.
So I personally cannot stomach building a building with 20 bathrooms.
I know, but it's never going to change, correct?
I think we should go back. Can we go back to the, I think we should work with the town and actually go back to the plumbing. Whatever they're called. And figure out if we can find an alternative solution, AKA having flushless toilets. What require, what is the tipping factor for having to do 20 bathrooms? Is it sewer? Is it plumbing? What is it?
Cause I do think that is also an accessibility issue. You know, you look at the porta potties down there and there's really no way. I, I mean, I.
Or we could.
If you have anyone in your family in a wheelchair, you understand what it's like.
Tow in something like the Concord Rec uses, which would be significantly less money at the White Pond that has wheelchair accessible bathrooms.
But it's temporary, correct?
They, they bought it.
They bought it.
Yeah. They tow it into White Pond and then I don't know where it goes in the winter.
I know we've borrowed it a couple of times already for graduation and things.
I had no idea how much it costs, but I have to think it's not a hundred K.
I am learning through the building project as we learn on different bathroom options and gender neutral things that the architect's design team, and I actually got CC'd on an email that one of our students wrote to the LGBTQ lead at, at Desi that looped back to our architects, because they're the group that works with Desi on the plumbing codes. It's an internally long process that the codes just move at snail's pace. No matter how much pressure's coming, the, the plumbing board just moves very slowly. So.
I, I find it difficult to believe the facility has not changed. We just turfed it. How does all of a sudden become a stadium? It's just a field with.
Yeah, it's your, it's your capacity for seeding is what I understand.
But if we could just check in with them, that we're a hundred percent, we could not be grandfathered in because the bleachers didn't change. The facility didn't.
Right. Usually code, once you start making adjustments, you're, you're on the hook for all the recent codes, the new codes, whatever you were grandfathered through doesn't evaporate.
We didn't really build anything. That's the thing. I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's worth arguing the point. I hear, I hear what you're saying.
We just, I, I looked at it with Google Earth. It's just moved.
Right.
We didn't.
All right. So let's work on that, you know.
But I think it is, once you start pulling permits, then you have to be up to.
I don't know.
You know, and that's, and, and with all the paving that was done down to, they had to pull permits.
Oh, let's just.
Yeah.
I personally would, will vote no. Cause I, we just kind of got to find a better solution, something with the new, cause I, I saw their flushless toilets. You know, but you still need, you know, need water to go into it. So that isn't the solution. Then I don't, it was an idea.
Well, I wonder if we might even do some, uh, investigation, not through any permitting authorities, but through some of the vendors of the kind of technologies you're talking about. Because they, they've got their experience in, in public sector work that they can tell us about and give us the information.
It's just a more elegant and sort of, you know, you still have to, it goes into a thing, it still needs to be pumped, but it's not, it's not smelly or, you know.
What if we could be more sustainable and, uh, a great deal more economical? And not overbuild and address, uh, the needs of, uh, folks who have different, uh, access requirements.
I completely agree with you. I find the lack of wheelchair access slash easy access to the, it's not sustainable, it's not friendly, it's not welcoming. Um, so I agree with you. I just would like to find not a $1.6 million solution or whatever the total is. I'm not good at math.
Right. And is 20 the total number for, um, all gender bathrooms? Like, is it, is it a total of 20 bathrooms?
Based on your capacity in the stadium, which would technically by code put you at 44. If we get a design built, we can apply for a waiver to drop it to 22 because you're going to be able to say, we don't use it except for, you know, football games and graduation, whatever.
The ratio seems really bonkers, to your point. It's bonkers.
Yeah.
There will never be 40 people.
We have such a limited amount of space, like.
It's bonk, it's totally to your point. It's bonkers.
And the bathrooms on the upper turf field, how did those get in? Just, you know, is that, cause it's not a stadium.
Bleacher size.
Oh, that's.
Remember there's hardly.
All about bleachers.
How about the bleachers?
Let's take a bleachers.
We've been told if we apply for 22, that's as good as we can expect to get because that'd be 50% of.
Right. Yes, I remember that.
The boilerplate requirement.
So regardless, we're looking at 20 bathrooms, no matter what.
From what we're told, if we, if we were to reduce it, we'd be the first is what we were told.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Far in the research we've done.
Is there, is there a requirement that the bathrooms have to be accessible through the, all seasons, including winter? Or you can shut everything down in the winter?
My, I believe it's based on your usage of the stadium. So a Thanksgiving Day game, even in a snowstorm would have to be accessible to.
Yeah.
Restrooms.
No, it has to be a, yeah, winterized or whatever facility. I think the town's appreciative of your challenge because we aren't getting cited on these topics you're bringing up right now. As they sort of understand the same sentiment Cynthia is expressing, well, that's a lot of money for what, what this is. But it does just sit around us. I know Kate has, Hodges has done a lot of research on these toileting facilities. So.
We could, we'll call her for a good toileting.
I know she did research on.
She did do a lot with White Pond and.
No, the other, I know, I'm forgetting. Um, they need to put bathrooms in at the new.
Row.
Jure. Thank you. And I don't think they had any hookups there whatsoever.
Correct.
Yeah. I can't actually land it on that one.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
And so we've got some resources available there.
Yep.
Couple of comments, Sarah, if I may, just to. Couple of comments. Chair, if I may, just continue to move this. I want to speak more about the tractor and the trailer, and do we need to house it somewhere, or is this one and done? And Cynthia, to your point about where we might slot different things, I'd be content only voting on what we might put forward at the next town meeting, and have everything else be penciled in at this point.
Yep.
Great. I like that idea.
Back to the trailer, do we need to put a roof over it? Do we need to tuck it?
Yeah, I, I think that, that it would be part of all of this price. I, I, I think you would need like a little hut. And I'm going to get more information for you for next week, though, on that.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have repaving and, and lighting.
Yep. Yep.
Finally.
And.
So we'll bring the follow-up to you next week.
Yep.
That's good. We, we were thinking of a vote for next week, but.
Yep.
You have a little more time into January, right? The market closes January and February.
I would hope that the town government and BD is fully apprised of our.
Yeah, we'll be sure of that as well.
Yes.
Very important.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Policies.
So I think I can speak to it, but I want my colleagues on the committee and Lori to listen carefully and step in where I blunder. We have, first, for adoption tonight, JJF student activity accounts. And this would be the proposed policy that we looked at last meeting. Secondly, JFABB admission of exchange students. This would be new to us and consistent with MASC.
This is totally different than the one we looked at last year? Or the same one?
I think it's almost the same.
No.
This is back to the original. Okay, so this is just the old one we looked at, great. That's what I thought I just was.
JJH searches and interrogations. This is MASC. Therefore, I think there's some minor changes there. JJIF athletic concussion. This would be our policy that was MASC, but we're adding the MASC reference. That remains true again for JICC student conduct on school buses. And if there is a motion to adopt those, let's wrap it into a second part of the motion, which is that JICC-R student conduct on school buses is to be removed, because that would be a handbook kind of item. So the motion would be to adopt the proposals that received first reading or previous meeting of JJF, JFABB, JJH, J, JIC, JICC, and removal of JICC-R.
All right.
Somebody care to say the words?
Very nice job, Courtney.
Thank you.
Policy.
Thank you, policy. Subcommittee?
Do we vote them one by one?
So we move, we, discussion now, you know.
Yes. One by one.
We have done a consent agenda on a larger like that? And then you just call out the ones you don't want to?
Yep.
Great. Up to you.
If there's no discussion, then.
It looked great. They read well.
Good.
I move that they, if I can move on to the action item. I move that they be adopted as proposed. The five that are updated and adopted as discussed, and the sixth student contact that be removed from the policy handbook.
Second. We don't have to, we don't have to go through and see if anyone wants to move, if everyone's. Let's second it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Vote for it, too. Anderson, I.
With I for both.
Marano, I for both.
Most of the I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for region.
All right.
Okay. I will return to public comment now. If there are any public comments, please raise your hand using the participant stab. And see none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regional part of this meeting.
So moved for, for the region.
So moved for. Oh, I second it? Okay. I'm like, what, I hit for the region? What am I doing? Second? Anderson, I.
With I.
Marano, I.
Most of the I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Concord School Committee will remain in session. Is everybody able to go through our remaining items without a break?
I'd love a one-minute break, just to get some water.
One-minute break? No, I, no. And welcome back. Concord School Committee is back in session, and we are on agenda item, the Concord Middle School Building Project Update. And I will defer to my colleagues who are on the building committee to provide us an update, and then we'll proceed from there.
I can go through the more simple things first, that are just straightforward. We have really up our engagement with the community, which has been really successful, actually. We've had, the last few weeks, we have focused on our, what I call like smaller engagements with smaller groups, a lot of school groups, townwide groups. We will continue engaging with groups that request our presence and that we also reach out to. We are setting up many of those dates in the early part of this month. You know, it will sort of slow down the closer we get towards the end of the month. But we do have three engagement opportunities this week alone. Tomorrow night, we have another big forum. Oh, no, I guess, then we have our meeting on, on Thursday morning, and then we will engage with the League of Women Voters on their first Friday series this Friday morning. The following week, we will have a panel discussion on sustainability. Matt Root, our subcommittee chair, will lead that with someone from the Concord Climate Action Board, as well as one of the experts at our design firm, SMMA. There are some other big ones coming up, but those are the ones that off the top of my head I can remember. So we are in, we're in, we're in full swing here. And I think people have been grateful, and we're grateful for the engagement, and we're just going to keep at it.
Great.
What else?
Do the complicated stuff.
The most recent meeting of the full committee on the 18th of November, we did our second round of value management, where we looked at where we can make some adjustments that wouldn't harm the education plan and space for teaching and learning. The result of that was a new total project budget, as we know it now. A lot of uncertainties, of course, about construction to be happening in the future. But with contingencies of 5% for construction, 5% for soft costs, and 2.5% for a bidding contingency. We are going to bring in the project at the present time at $102,716,610. This is a million dollars under the approved amount of 103.7 from the select board. The, the number they'd like to see the committee achieve. And this Thursday, much of the discussion will take a look at the way in which the soil is going to be moved around, such that we can excavate and build and then refill. The, the idea of moving soil sounds simple. It's not. It's a lot of trucks and a lot of cost. So there could be a swing of half a million dollars here, depending on how we do it, around numbers. So that's going to get a careful look this week, as will ventilation. We don't have a strict metric that we want to hit for cubic feet per minute moving through, or, or parts per million of, what, CO, CO, right?
carbon dioxide.
Oh, so we do have industry standards around that, but there's no fixed number that we have to hit. So this is going to be really a, a judgment call based on the best science we can bring to the debate.
Okay.
Should be an interesting meeting.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
So when is the, is there another meeting before the special hearing, special town meeting hearing?
We meet on Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Then again, do you meet again if you're not?
So the goal, that's the question.
Okay.
Can we resolve those two big things, soil and ventilation, on Thursday as a committee?
And there's no other value management on the table right at this time?
We are not planning to revisit that at this point.
Okay.
Unless the contingencies, we're just over 100 million.
Yeah.
So when you look at the raw costs, it's what, 100 million point six?
Yeah, but contingencies are important. Okay, contingency has to be built into your budget.
No, I, I get that, but I'm just saying.
Right. You're trying to finalize this Thursday?
Yeah, we approached it from easiest to hardest, or less costly to most, and got the easier, less costly things resolved, and now you've got the hard, hardest, biggest price tags left to discuss.
And in terms of ventilation, is there, you know, an expert that's advising the committee? Or does the committee have discussion about that? You know, is there any, you know?
The answer is no, number one. Number two, much of our data is coming from other schools that have recently been built. The Kennedy, for example, in Cambridge. We ask questions, what does it mean to reach 600 parts per million, 800 parts per million, and so on.
Does the Cambridge School Committee have a policy regarding ventilation?
We're going to have to find that out before Thursday. I was in touch with the chairs today. They are rapidly trying to gather the data necessary for a good discussion Thursday. So we're, we're down to the wire, and.
Okay.
They know that they're still scrambling for data from the OPM and the, the design team on this.
I think it's also worth noting, I think people's, the, the focus on ventilation, vis a vis COVID, has really.
Oh, yes.
I think changed these metrics, you know, so, you know, the, the idea that like some school might have a longstanding policy is probably unlikely. I mean, we'll, you know, obviously we'll.
I don't know.
It's really interesting, right? Because this is, this probably wouldn't be.
Oh, no.
You know, at the forefront of what we're finding to be really tricky, right?
We would take a default off the shelf.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Yeah.
And, and we'd be fine with it. We'd be happy with it. One of the discussions I had with somebody recently was, well, make, make the ducks bigger, so that if you need to beef up the system later, you can. Well, you can't do it that way.
No.
It's not that simple. Everything's got to interrelate.
No, no, no. It's not.
Very sophisticated system.
Yes.
So we're looking at it from the individual human being level. What, what airflow do we need per person?
And it's tricky, because our sustainability subcommittee, who has done the lion's share of the work to get us this far, it's worth noting to you that they did not reach consensus on whether to recommend this ventilation system or not. So then it's like, huh, you know? You know, you kind of wish they did when you're, when you're me in court.
Well, and, well, to Lori's point, yeah, to Lori's point, we may or may not be able to bring this to some, some conclusion Thursday. If it needs more work, it's going to need more work. I don't know. I'm not going to predict.
Yeah.
I don't think you are either. We're not going to, we'll see what happens. We'll do what we have to do.
Sure.
Is, is the commitment we're prepared to make.
Usually when we're talking value engineering, we're talking reducing costs. This is an add-on.
Yes.
This is additional to what, where we're at right now. So it's, it's a lot to think about.
Regarding the dirt, if we store on-site as much as possible, does it create any safety issues?
We have a plan that we're reviewing right now, that we just got today, yesterday, from SMMA, to answer that question, both at Sanborn and if they use the, the field down at Peabody. Having been on construction sites with kids, literally.
Which field by Peabody?
The lower Peabody field.
This is a town issue as well?
Yes. In fact, the request to consider it came from the town, so.
The recreation group?
Probably not. We're considering, I mean, my personal feeling is, right now, that whole middle school property, we're going to have to re, reset where all the field activities are happening for years.
Well, but I think that's, one of the lifeboats was going to be the Peabody field.
All I know is I was asked by the town manager to consider it, because that's something they have access.
But I think we're going to need to be very transparent at the hearing.
Absolutely.
We're looking at 2229 as well.
Yes, they are.
Which would be much less.
Maybe even other sites. I don't know. Is the town on there?
I think they're looking at others with, I don't know how much I'm supposed to say yet, because they sent me one quick email yesterday afternoon. Sounds like they're looking at others with less optimism. 229 sounds pretty, pretty positive, I think.
Can you clarify what 229 is?
That's the stuff.
Oh, okay.
My, and my, my guess, my uninformed guess is, once you put dirt on a truck, it's, the mileage is not really what does.
No, no. The truck happy to go.
Put it on a truck and then tip it somewhere.
Yes.
And will it be usable after you store it at the Sturman site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Everything that has to be capped, I believe is capped there. Don't quote me, I'm an authority, but it's not a, it's not an imminent hazard to anybody.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll wait for your meeting.
We were asked about Peabody in terms of our usage of Peabody. I assume the town's talking to its own.
It's heavily used.
Yes.
Having, driving by that every weekend.
Yeah, you're right there.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then solar, because I know this is going to come up at the, at the hearing.
I, I have heard, so this is unofficial, but I have heard that members of the light board, if not the light board themselves, are really engaged in this.
Okay, good.
Now. I don't have any other details.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay.
I did let Dave Wood know you might reach out to.
Okay.
Share the light board.
Thank you.
So feel, please go ahead.
Great. Anything else on the middle school? We'll just wait for your.
There will be much more.
Exactly. Tonight, I should say.
Yeah.
Great. The next topic is the CPS capital plan. So we have your documents with all very detailed recommendations. Do you, anything, anything new to add? We've had this for a while.
Yeah, no, this is still our, our recommendations. I recommend no changes. Priority.
And has the town manager's office confirmed their town meeting number for CPS capital?
Of 900, yeah.
Okay.
For the 23 projects, so are there, so the Alcott Oil and Controls, is there any, are there any grants or anything associated with that now, right?
No, but we can always, we can always certainly look into that, and.
Okay.
Might be a good introduction for me and the new sustainability manager.
That would be good. And have, do we have energy audits on, let's say, Alcott Thoreau, especially Ripley, that we've done?
We have Ripley. We've done that since I've been here.
Okay.
I don't, do we have on the other ones?
I thought we did everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll look into that.
Katie only worked with us to do those.
So it'd be good, just as far as the new sustainability director goes, if she's aware of those, she has those.
Yeah.
And just.
She, she has them, yeah.
So, yeah, that would be good.
They must have them, because they actually made a chart comparing all the buildings, and Sanborn and Ripley were off the charts.
Not surprising.
Not good things.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have.
Has a dashboard.
Yeah. I guess my question, is there anything else we can do? Is there any? I have, I guess my question, is there anything else we can do? Is there any more low-hanging fruit at Ripley, in terms of making it, like, we have all LEDs, we have all the easy things? Yes? Or no?
We'll have to go back and remind ourselves. We've lived a few lives since the review was done, so we'll go back and take a look.
Okay, I just.
Yeah. No, it's a good, good question.
I know, it's, it's probably not, it's just probably not a lot of money, but just.
Yeah, it's good to look at whatever we can.
What other questions do people have? And I assume, so, just going through the carpet tile replacement, you said Alcott would be the focus, so that would be pretty much all Alcott, the 55 for.
For FY '23, yeah.
And then, I assume the other two are Willard and Thoreau?
Yep.
Will we save any money because of the.
Repair.
Redone 94 wing?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. We'll not have to touch that for a long time.
That's right. What percentage of the school approximately is it? A quarter?
It's eight classrooms, so it's, it's probably a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One floor.
Angel refers to it as a quarter when we.
Okay, that's.
Talk in big picture.
So that's.
Significant. No, there was definitely work you were going to do there. I.
And I would have.
Prefer not to have gotten to it this.
No.
But it's happening.
And I would have, do you think it's going to be a little more energy efficient, the wing, with the work? It's not going to be less?
Yeah, it won't be less.
Okay, that's fine.
We're not changing the system, so.
No, 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 but I just wondered, tighter, whatever.
I would think, yeah, I would think.
Okay.
Down to.
So one of those is less than 50, hopefully, with carpet and tile. Good. Anything else?
I don't have any questions.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so we'll vote this next time. I, I just, yeah, if we could, I don't want to add, but just looking, thinking about Ripley and its longer, long lifespan.
Sure, we'll find, yeah, we'll pull the energy audit.
I found them already.
Good. Let's see here.
Well, I do have one question.
There you go.
I'm looking for a question.
Ah.
Nope, forgive me, I found it.
Ah.
Sandborne life sa, okay, Sandborne life safety. I just wanted to make sure it was still in there.
Yep.
Yep, we need it in there.
And how, how much have we dipped into that this year?
You know, right now, we, you can carry it over year to year, so I think there's, I think there's still 100 grand in there.
Okay.
We're never sure when something happens.
No, I'm not advocating to take it away. I just.
The heat wasn't working, so you hold your breath and hope it's not.
I know.
Hundreds or thousands of others.
Yeah.
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 I can get you.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we have reached the end of our agenda.
Great.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, hello, school committee. Sorry, I wanted to pop in earlier, but I've been toggling back and forth between this and the CPC hearing, which is at the same time this evening. I appreciate your discussion on the capital plan for the high school and the discussion about the amenities building. I would, I would remind you that the peak debt years associated with the middle school will be '26, '27, and '28. And to take that into consideration as you discuss the timing of when you're going to ask for these projects to be done, and I would echo some of the comments earlier about looking for ways to self-fund some of these projects, either through the athletic revolving fund or through the use of the stabilization reserve that you established. This, this is going to be a tough time, right? So I get it. I understand that you have some capital needs, but timing isn't great.
Yep.
Oh.
Thank you for the feedback.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the middle school court?
Yes.
Keep that number down. I don't want it coming up after Thursday. I understand what you guys are doing, but I'm really hoping that number's not coming up based on ventilation, that if it needs to, that there's an offset.
I am confident the building committee has heard both you and the select board, and we'll, we'll do our very best.
I know you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marano, I.
Rainey, I. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.